Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council meeting for Tuesday, April 18th, 2023. If you could please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Griscoviac.
Here.
Councilmember Ray Rauer.
Here.
Councilmember Novak.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Armstrong.
Here.
Councilmember Carlson.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here. Thank you. Let's adopt this evening's agenda.
Does Mayor make a motion to adopt the agenda?
Second.
Motion by Carlson and a second by Ray Rauer. Is there any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and the agenda is adopted. And the very first item on our agenda is to recognize our volunteers. Volunteer recognition. There we go. National Volunteer Week provides an opportunity to recognize the impact of volunteer service and the power of volunteers to tackle society's greatest challenges and build stronger communities. I always do that, and then half of that's already in the proclamation, so we'll see how we can do. Whereas, volunteers enrich the lives of many through their tremendous commitment and generosity. And whereas, Coon Rapids has been blessed with citizens willing to volunteer their time, talent, and energy to improve the quality of life in our community. And whereas, in 2023, hundreds of volunteers will donate thousands of hours to the success of Coon Rapids Senior Services and its programs. And whereas, the city council is fortunate to have more than 70 citizen volunteers serving on advisory commissions, contributing to the overall well-being of the city. And whereas, volunteers are truly building stronger communities and are deserving of our special recognition for their energy and enthusiasm in strengthening communities throughout Minnesota. And now, therefore, I, Jerry Cook, Mayor of the City of Coon Rapids, on behalf of the Coon Rapids City Council, hereby recognize the valuable contributions made by volunteers for the enrichment and betterment of our community and express our gratitude to them for sharing their time and talents, proclaimed this 18th day of April, 2023. So, yeah, if you ever go over to the Senior Center during any of their events, it's just lots of volunteers making that work and keeping that going over there. And all of our committees and commissions, and we appreciate all of them. All right, we are on to item number two, which is kind of a special deal. We have Miss Minnesota Teen Natalie Berg here. If you would come up to our microphones over there, or ambo, and introduce yourself and tell us whatever you want to tell us.
Okay. Hi, everyone. My name is Natalie Berg, and I'm currently a junior at Coon Rapids High School. If I look familiar, it's because I was here a couple of years ago to receive the Citizens Award for saving my dad's life. I was crowned Miss Heart of the Lakes Teen back in October, and just on March 25th, what I received, the title of Miss Minnesota's Teen 2023. I will be representing the state of Minnesota and the city of Coon Rapids at the Miss America Teen Competition in November. I am the second teen from Coon Rapids to receive the title of Miss Minnesota, which is an honor as itself, especially with how hard I've worked. My social impact initiative, which is what I'll be dedicating my year to, is building children's literacy, one book at a time. I get to now go around the state of Minnesota and promote children's literacy by providing kids all over the state with books and resources so they can better their education through literacy. I've created literacy kits for the Family of Christ Preschool in Ham Lake to give kids the opportunity to bring books home that might not have them. I also was talking with the daycare teachers who didn't have enough books for their preschool and donated over 1,200 books to their library, which is insane. In addition, I have donated over 2,500 books to all over, and one of them being the Sheriff's Office. I just recently went over there. I think I donated a couple hundred bucks, which is great for the prisoners. And I also partner with Books for Better Minnesota, which is a nonprofit up north that gives kids free books to give those who don't have the resources, the resources that they need. I love partnering with places and promoting children's literacy and reading. I also performed my talent of Irish dancing on the Miss Minnesota Teen Stage, where I ended up winning talent as well. I danced to a song from The Lord of the Dance, which is a very well-known Irish dance performing group that travels all over the world, and I'm really excited to represent the city of Coon Rapids at the Miss America Competition in August. Thank you.
Do any of you have any questions for me? I do.
Okay.
So, I have to tell you, just, I have to share a little bit. So, I was down at Kirin's and saw you dance, like in 2019, I think.
Yep.
On the stage on your Irish dance. We saw you here for the Citizens Award. We had you here before that. It seems to me like when you sold the most Girl Scout cookies, weren't you on Good Morning America or something for Girl Scout cookies?
The Today Show in New York City.
Yeah, and you literally just turned 17 this weekend.
Yep, on Sunday.
Yeah, so, I'm just kind of curious. Well, we know what's next, Miss America Teen now, but it's just, it's really exciting to have you here and to just see how you're growing.
Yes, you've definitely seen me grow, that's for sure. From being here and at my place of work, you're always seeing me somewhere.
That's true. Anybody have any questions for her before we let her go?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Carlson.
I just want to say you're awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you for representing our city. My gosh.
I know, I definitely, I love it. I mean, I just got done golfing at the golf course about two hours ago, so I definitely love this city, and I'm really excited to be a citizen and promote it at Miss America. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
All right, kind of all downhill from there. We're looking at approval of the minutes from April 4th.
Sub moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Geisler and a second by Novak to approve the minutes from the April 4th, 2023 meeting. Is there any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. We have four items on our consent agenda this evening. Item number four on your agenda, which is the first item on the consent agenda, is to approve the final payment to Municipal Builders Incorporated for Project 22-7, 2022 Well Rehabilitation Program. This is based on some change orders for extended completion dates, additional pump and motor repair to booster number six, a reducer flange, and a reduction for unit price adjustments. So, we're looking to approve the change orders and final payment to Municipal Builders Incorporated in the amount of $10,106.56 for Project 22-7, 2022 Well Rehabilitation Program. Item five, which is the second item on our consent agenda, is to accept drainage and utility easements from Philip and April Grudell. On May 10th, the planning commission approved their subdivision exception to adjust the residential boundary line. The existing lots do not have perimeter drainage and utility easements as currently required, so the conditions of approval required the applicant to provide these easements. So, we're looking to accept easements from Philip J. Grudell and April B. Grudell for drainage and utility purposes over portions of two properties located at 10860 and 10870 Mississippi Boulevard. Item six, which is the third item on our consent agenda, is to accept right-of-entry agreement with Alina Health System. The right-of-entry agreement is required due to a planned expansion of the Mercy Hospital ambulance garage along Dakota Street south of Coon Rapids Boulevard. The building expansion requires relocation of a private fire hydrant. The right-of-entry agreement will allow city public works and public safety personnel the ability to periodically operate the relocated private fire hydrant to verify it remains in proper working condition. So, we're looking to accept the right-of-way entry agreement with Alina Health System located at 4050 Coon Rapids Boulevard Northwest. And item seven, which is the fourth and final item on our consent agenda, is to adopt Resolution 23-59, accepting Twin Cities Gateway 2023 Member City Grant Agreement. We're looking to approve the 2023 Member City Marketing Grant Agreement, adopt Resolution 23-59, accepting the 2023 Member City Marketing Grant in the amount of $27,220. And then direct staff to contribute $17,000 of the grant funds to the Community Strength Foundation for the purpose of supporting the Fourth of July Celebration, fireworks, and other events that promote bringing visitors to Coon Rapids. And that is our full consent agenda.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Ray Rauer.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Ray Rauer and a second by Griscoviac. Is there any discussion or questions on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. Item eight is to consider Resolution awarding 23-3 for sanitary sewer lining. Mr. Hammer, are you tired of talking about this yet tonight?
No, Mr. Mayor, Council. Staff is looking for an award of contracts. As I mentioned in the memo and also in our work session, bids came in higher than anticipated. We did work to try to keep them within budget. Provide you a few options to consider. The recommendation by staff is to do a reduced scope. We would do about 1,250 feet less pipe than what was originally planned and 13 manholes. We would not line those, but we can always do those separate and independent of this project. We believe prices aren't coming down anytime soon, so we definitely want to get something going. So, we would recommend, I would recommend to you, that we award a contract to Veit and Company in the amount of $1,840,194. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Hammer?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Carlson.
Make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number 23-3 sub 9, awarding a contract to Veit and Companies in the amount of $1,840,194 for the sewer lining project.
Second.
Motion by Carlson and a second by Armstrong. Is there a discussion on this or further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
Yeah, just to reiterate some of the things that people maybe obviously didn't hear in our work session. But, you know, since, you know, this adjustment in the scope gets us a lot of the work done. It keeps it within the budget that we had planned, you know, so it's the best of all things, and the work that we are, you know, setting aside is work that can be easily done later. So, that is why I would be supporting this.
Yeah, yeah, and that was kind of the, in the workshop, we learned that we're still going to align the horizontal pipe, but we're going to pull out the 13 vertical manholes, which is a separate process anyway, so it seems like it makes sense to pull that out and get the bid back to where we need it to be. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. Item nine is to consider Planning Case 23-7, consider adoption of Ordinance 2281, amending Chapter 11-701, general regulations and tables. Dakota, this is the one we introduced last meeting, correct?
Correct, yep. It was introduced last meeting, and the main change here is just to make in the regional shopping zoning district, indoor recreation, a permitted use.
Yep, yep, to allow indoor recreation uses in the regional shopping zoning district. Does anybody have any questions? Mr. Crowell on this?
No.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
I'll make a motion to adopt Ordinance 2281, amending Chapter 11-701 to allow indoor recreation in the regional shopping zoning district.
Second.
Motion by Geisler and a second by Novak. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. Item 10 is to consider adoption of Ordinance 2282, amending Chapter 8-900 miscellaneous traffic regulations. This was also introduced at the last meeting, and just the summation paragraph we've got in here, it's meant to address general driving behavior that is inappropriate. The next clause is meant to address events which occur generally in large paved areas that are focused on extreme driving behavior. The third clause specifically addresses street racing. In most circumstances, a violation of this clause will be a violation of the first clause. And then the fourth addresses the noise issues that often come with the aforementioned behaviors, reincorporating the original criminalization of the section into a single clause. The penultimate clause, is that how you say that? I had to look it up, I know what it means. Just forgot to look up how you pronounce it. All right, allows the ordinance to be applied to passengers, non-driving participants, and organizers if they aid and abet the illegal behavior in some way, but mere presence at the event is not a violation. All right, Mr. Brody, was there anything you wanted to cover?
No, Your Honor. Like I said, we talked about it at great length at the introduction. It's another tool for officers to use this summer to kind of go with state law and all their other items that they have, and so we're obviously in support of this. We worked with the Police Department, and so asked that you'd adopt it tonight, and we'll put it out there as well, that we do have it on the books now.
Sounds good. Any questions for Mr. Brody?
Your Honor.
Councilmember Ray Rauer.
I make a motion to adopt Ordinance 2282, amending Chapter 8-901 as it relates to prohibited driving conduct.
Second.
Motion by Ray Rauer, boy, that was close. I'm going to give it to Novak. Second to Novak. Is there discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Griscoviac.
I'll just say that, you know, I'm glad that this makes sense. It's in, you know, it covers us under state code and constitutional, of course, but more than that, we've all heard about the issues that we're having here, and we are actually, as a council, we're addressing some of the issues. I know a council member, Geisler, has probably heard more of the complaints and issues than others, but I think it's a good step, a good tool for our police.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
Yeah, I mean, this is a step, it's another tool, it is not a silver bullet. It's not going to solve every problem that could potentially occur in the issues that we've seen with, related to the crews over the last couple of years along the Boulevard. This is a lot, has heavier focus on some of the ancillary behaviors that came out of having more people around with the cars and the driving, but it is a step in the right direction. It gives us another tool to address the issues on the behaviors that are not, that we don't want in the city.
Your Honor.
Yep, Councilmember Novak.
I just want to say that, you know, my ward and my house is real close to Coon Rapids Boulevard and Hanson Boulevard, and I'm very familiar with a lot of the problems that hopefully this will help address, and I just want to encourage everyone in the city who has problems related to this type of traffic, prohibited conduct, to keep letting us know what these issues are. We can keep trying to solve these, but if we don't hear the problems, we don't know about the problems necessarily.
All right, do we have any other discussion on this? Hearing none, are we all good?
Mr. Mayor, once you've taken your vote on this one, I'd like to ask us to go back to the first ordinance and have a conversation about summary publication on that one.
Okay, very good. All right, so, we have a motion and a second on our current, to adopt Ordinance 2282, amending Chapter 8-901 as it relates to prohibited driving conduct. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. And we're going to go back to item nine.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would like to add to my motion of adoption of Ordinance 2281, amending Chapter 11-701 to allow indoor recreation in the special shopping zoning district, that we allow for a summary of the ordinance to be published.
Second.
I think rather, the progress rule's probably rolling over right now, but I think the intent is we want to go back to that item. I think we just make a motion that we summary publish it rather than redo the whole motion, if that makes sense.
Okay.
Yep.
So, I will rescind that motion, I'll make a new motion, that for Ordinance 2281 that we move that it is a summary published for the ordinance publication versus the full ordinance. Does that make more sense?
It's fine with me, and I'd ask the mayor if he's okay to sort of taking things out of order here a little bit, but.
I'm good taking them out of order, I just want to make sure that we got everything in the motion you need, because it started to kind of run out there a little bit.
Yep. Well, we changed it.
Yeah, okay, so we have a motion by Geisler, do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion by Geisler and a second by Griscoviac, basically to allow summary publication of it.
Which means we just give a summary of the ordinance when we publish it, it saves on some costs to the city.
Yep.
And we do that for our larger, longer ordinances.
Okay, very good. Is there any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries.
Thank you.
And we'll just slip right back into Mr. Roberts. Item 11 is to consider Resolution 23-10 sub 8, accepting plans and specs for Northdale Boulevard Mill and Overlay and Water Main Replacement and authorize solicitation of bids. Mr. Hammer, do you want to hit the highlights on this one?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor, Council. Staff is looking to go out for bids on water main replacement on Northdale Boulevard. We're working in cooperation with Anoka County, who's going to do a mill and overlay on that road, generally from Quince to Ilex Street. It's kind of the termini where the Foley project left off and where the signalization going into Sand Creek left off. We've got some water main in there, it's old concrete pipe water main with some cast iron. It was put in in 1959. We've got the north and south Thompson Heights coming up in the future that all of that infrastructure will tie into this pipe. So, having the opportunity now with the county doing the overlay project, coordinating, we thought we would move this one forward and try to get the project completed. It is budgeted. We will come back with a joint powers agreement as well as consideration of award of contract in about six weeks.
So, Mr. Hammer, we'll have to do a complete reconstruction on the street if we're doing water main under this street, aren't we?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, the water main is currently kind of underneath the north curb line, so we could probably do it with just reconstructing half of the road. But, Anoka County was going to be doing a mill and overlay anyway. That's the beauty of it, we take care of the utilities, they handle the paving portion of it, we both get what we need, and we do it in one project. I will point out, however, that because it is on one half of the roadway during that construction, there will be detours. We could maybe maintain one lane of traffic, but that would be difficult, so during the mill and overlay portion, we will maintain traffic, but during the roadway, there will probably be a detour going around this area.
Okay, yeah, because I just know we get such a value when we do our mill and overlays, and now if we're doing a reconstruction, it just seemed like that's going to a lot more money than, okay.
Mr. Mayor.
All good, I guess we're good. Councilmember Griscoviac.
I think you make a great point, and I'd just like to clarify for you, how do you do a mill and overlay if you're reconstructing the road? Isn't it one or the other?
Councilmember Griscoviac, we will not be doing a mill and overlay on the half that we're going to, I mean, we have to dig down eight, nine feet to get to the water main, then we rebuild that all the way up. But, as opposed to just then paving half of the road, we can just build it up to the base, and then Anoka County will mill out the other side, will pave, just so it's one smooth coat in the end and not mishmash or patching.
I got you, a good partnership deal going here, okay.
It's going to be interesting to see the bids on this one. All right, Councilmember Armstrong.
I make a motion that the council adopt Resolution Number 23-10 sub 8, approving plans and specifications ordering the advertisement for bids for the Northdale Boulevard Mill and Overlay and Water Main Replacement Project.
Second.
Motion by Armstrong and a second by Carlson. Is there further discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. Item 12 is to consider a joint powers agreement for traffic signal and intersection improvements at Mississippi Boulevard and Coon Rapids Boulevard, Project 21-37. This is a classic example of the speed of government. Former Mayor Bob Voss, who passed away now several years ago, his wife called and asked for this to be done to the intersection because she was having such a hard time getting him to the hospital for his treatments when the school was in session. And that's who I thought of, as soon as I looked at this project, was, it's like, the speed of government, this is not going to be, this is not going to be quick. So, Mr. Hammer, you want to hit the highlights on this one?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. The city is working with Anoka County on a signal upgrade at Mississippi and Coon Rapids Boulevards. This is a joint powers agreement project, there are federal funds that were received up to $450,000 for the improvement. The adding of the additional northbound left-turning movement is kind of a city responsibility. To add to your speed of government, we reconstructed that road 2016, 2017, and at that time, we considered the same thing, but because of the intersection, we were confined, so we needed to wait for this to come along. Now, we have the opportunity to do it. We weren't as prepared as we should have been as far as budgeting, but it is MSA eligible, so we'll have the MSA funds to cover our portion. There will be no impacts to the Fourth of July Celebration, because that is a very busy intersection, they may start doing some work in advance of that. We were able to successfully negotiate sidewalk easements with the college to put that back together. So, Anoka County will be leading this project this summer. It's a cooperative effort, minimal cost to the city in the grand scope of things and federal fund participation, so I would recommend we approve this joint powers agreement and proceed with the project.
Thank you, Mr. Hammer. Anybody have any questions, Mr. Hammer?
Mr. Mayor, I'm just happy I drive that intersection all the time, and it'd be nice to not have to dodge all the big paddles there, and then having to wait for, you know, really if you transit that intersection, like 9:00 AM in the morning or about 4:00 in the afternoon when kids are coming or going to school, it's crazy. So, this will help a lot. So, I will make a motion to approve the execution of a joint powers agreement, JPA, with Anoka County, to reconstruct the traffic signal and perform turn lane improvement at the intersection of County State Aid Highway 1, Coon Rapids Boulevard, and Mississippi Boulevard.
Second.
Motion by Geisler and a second by Ray Rauer. Do we have further discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Griscoviac.
I support the improvement, I just have a question on the funding. It says we're going to use municipal state aid money for that. Are we using this year's state aid funds for that, or are we still taking from a year out?
Councilmember Griscoviac, we are almost back to equal from all those advances we've done. I think we're maybe close to a million on the good side, and so we'll be back into the regular rotation next year with, I think we get about $2 million a year.
Okay, thank you, good news.
That's huge, because we moved ahead like 10 years on projects.
We did.
So, that's awesome. All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. Item 13 is to consider construction contract for water main sliplining and a budget amendment for Project 18-27. Mr. Hammer.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Council, this will complete all water main work on the Foley Overpass Project. Due to some inaccurate record drawings and some deteriorator pipe during construction, we're kind of stuck in a scenario where we've got dead ends on either side of the railroad track. So, what we're proposing to do here is slipline a new pipe through the existing pipes that are out there, get outside the railroad right away, set us up well into the future, do it at a reasonable cost, and complete the Foley Overpass Project and our water main and infrastructure work. It is something that wasn't anticipated, so there is a budget amendment that also goes with this, so I would recommend we award a contract to Dave Perkins for $149,966, and then also to amend the water. and then also to amend the water fund for $150,000 to cover those costs.
That's pretty impressive, we're talking water main, the railroad, and a new, and a new overpass, and we're talking something that's $150,000, so it's buttoned up. All right, anybody have any questions of Mr. Hammer?
Your Honor.
Councilmember Ray Rower.
I make a motion to approve a construction contract with Dave Perkins Contracting Incorporated for the 93rd Avenue Old Foley Boulevard Water Main Slip Linings, and authorize staff to execute the agreement, and to approve Resolution 23-57, amending the 2023 Water Fund 601 in the amount of $150,000.
Second.
Motion by Ray Rower and a second by Armstrong. Is there further discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that motion carries. Item 14 is to consider Resolution Number 23-58, establishing the bulk water permit fees and charges.
Ms. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, so as a convenience, the city offers contractors on small projects access to bulk water at the public works facility. This is, these contractors have to get a bulk water permit, which consists of an administrative fee of $35, which we are not recommending any change to, and then water charges for this. We're recommending an increase to the water charge to align with our Tier 1 residential and commercial rate for our new water rates that were just approved this year. So we go from $2 per 1,000 gallons to $2.21 per 1,000 gallons, up to a maximum of 10,000 gallons effective May 1st, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I actually have a question for Mr. Hammer. Mr. Hammer, does this cover our staff time for going over there and filling these tanks for these contractors?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, we don't, we don't have to do that, there's this location they pull right up into and, and are able to do it on their own.
Okay.
That's why we only do small, otherwise you get the meter and you take it off a hydrant and you pay that way. That's, that's why we cap it.
Okay, excellent, all right, anybody have any questions, Ms. Anderson here?
Your Honor.
Councilmember Novak.
I recommend adoption of Resolution 28-58, establishing bulk water permit fees and changes effective May 1, 2023.
Second.
So you have a motion by Novak and a second by Geisler, and that was for adoption of Resolution 23-58, establishing bulk water permit fees and charges effective May 1, 2023. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grischoviac.
I think it makes sense, just want to make clear, I mean, these contractors will now pay the same price that our residents pay. No break or anything, just getting it buttoned up in code here.
All right, other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that motion carries. And we are at the open mic, public comment portion of the meeting. Is anybody here to address counsel for open mic? Oh, all right, just here for all the fun.
For the X drawing.
All right, so then we have one report from a previous open mic, and that was open mic response, Pat Morris, 128 XX Crooked Lake Boulevard. She indicated she resides on a property that does not have direct public street access. Instead, access to Crooked Lake Boulevard is provided via a private easement. City staff is aware of only a handful of situations throughout the city where residential lots access public streets via private easements, and the city's current subdivision regulations require at least 20 feet of street frontage, frontage, per single family lot. She expressed concern that a neighbor whose property abuts her driveway constructed a fence a short distance from the pavement, and she suggested this limit the amount of space available for snow, snow storage. City staff cannot verify the location of the fence or driveway in relation to the easement area. City zoning regulations allow both residential driveways and fences to be constructed up to a property line with no setback, however, only a licensed surveyor can establish the exact location. So property line disputes, here's the bottom line, property line disputes are a civil matter between private properties. So no further action is recommended at this time from us, and because relatively few instances exist throughout the city where street access is provided via a private easement, staff believes it is impractical to revise zoning regulations in response to this specific situation. Further, because residential properties throughout the city have fences and driveways constructed along property lines, changing setback requirements for either fences or driveways more broadly could have significant implications. And she received that, she would have received that response in the mail as well. And we are to other business.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
I think the, the one thing, and maybe Mr. Hammer can add any comments to this as well, that the city is going to start doing hydrant flushing. That's going to be, we did it last spring, we doing it this spring, and I'm sure we'll do it next spring. And what happens, and it's going to be primarily north of Highway 10, and so there's a map on the city website if you want to know if your home is going to be in, in that area. But with hydrant flushing, there likely will be some brown water that you will see coming from your taps. It's temporary, it's not harmful, it just doesn't look very nice. But, so just beware of when that would be, you know, in your area, and know that the hydrant flushing, it's to take, help take the sediment out. Mr. Hammer, if there's anything you want to add to, to that that I missed?
No, Councilmember Geisler, you should do PSAs. For us, it's just maintaining the system, it, it'll, it'll reduce water quality for a period of time, only for the improvement. It just cleans the scaling off of those internal pipes, gets the pressures back up to where they need to be, it's just routine maintenance. We switch halves of the city every year, and that's what transpires, so.
How do you think that Mississippi River cleanup is going to go on the 26th? The river's going to crest this week on like Thursday, the, what, 20th? So I'm kind of wondering if there'll be anything left to pick up. Pretty much everything I see is heading south.
Yeah, there's an awful lot heading south.
Your Honor.
Yeah, Councilmember Ray Rower.
Yeah, just on that, thinking about Minnesota and the weather here, if you don't like it today, just wait till tomorrow, because it'll be different. We had that 40-degree swing between Friday and Sunday, and with that really warm weather last week, all of our snow melted, so I was just wondering if we could find out from staff if we have any concerns for flooding in Coon Rapids.
Certainly, Councilmember Ray Rower. There are two gauges, one on either side of the city, on the Mississippi primarily is what I'm speaking to, one at the 169 Bridge, one at 610. The moderate risk for flooding in both locations, kind of the upstream channel, they're talking about a flood crush somewhere around 842, which is probably five to six feet lower than what most of the banks are in that location. So while the water will be high, there are not any real significant concerns for property damage here in Coon Rapids. On the south end, closer to the 610 area, that crest is also expected Thursday at around 821, in most properties down there, more in that 824, 825 range. There are a couple of properties, I've spoken to them about some precautions they could take. So while downstream further, there are going to be bigger implications, at least what's predicted now. By this weekend, the crest should have come through, and, and it looks as if the predictions are saying that at least property-wise, we will be okay here in Coon Rapids.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, other residents to come before counsel?
Mayor, counsel, I made this pitch a couple of weeks ago, so may as well make it again. So for folks who received their property value notices last month, the city does have the local Board of Appeal and Equalization meeting on Tuesday, one week from today. And really, it's an opportunity that if you have questions about your 2024 proposed property values for taxes payable in 2024, we really would suggest that you reach out to our city assessor's office sometime this week and ask those questions. Oftentimes, when they speak with our assessor's office, they're satisfied with the response and/or the office can visit your home and sort of update their information and make adjustments. Those adjustments, at this point, would need to be made on the night of the meeting. The period to have them adjusted prior to has lapsed already, but there's still a, a good opportunity for you to reach out, find out more, maybe you're satisfied. And if you're not, at least then you know, and you can either make that appeal one week from tonight or have a, the city assessor come out to your home. So we get a lot of questions about that come budget time, you know, people have questions about their value. We always express the time to address those is in March and April of every year, and that's where we're at, and one week from tonight, we'll have that discussion. I did hear maybe Ashley's got more of an update than I do even, but I spoke with our city assessor, Rich Gruber, last week, he said they're getting calls, but not at the same volume as they've seen the last couple of years, where residential values really were spiking. 2024, at least, is a little bit of a calmer year from the residential side, and so call volumes down, but it's still, you know, a significant number of phone calls they're getting.
Okay. Yeah, so if you have a concern with the value of your property, that's this time of year.
Yeah.
Talk to the assessor, and if you have a problem with what the property taxes are in general in Coon Rapids, that's when you come in and talk to us in the fall.
Yeah, sure, truth in taxation, November, December, yeah.
Yep. All right, we still have the big skating show coming up this weekend, or next weekend.
Mayor, counsel, it is next week, the 27th through the 29th, Gliding Amongst the Stars Ice Show. So if you go to our website, you can find out more information about that. It's really a great event for all folks who, you know, enjoy that entertainment. They really do it up at the ice center very nicely, you know, dim all the lights, the windows are blocked out. Usually get some really top-end talent to come in there and have a nice three days on that.
They bring in some really top talent, but still, one of my favorite parts is when the, the dads and daughters go out there and skate together. That's usually pretty good, yeah.
And Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
One other, and I'll maybe ask Captain Steiner. Saturday is the National Drug Takeback Day. So if you have expired medications, please don't throw them down in the sink and put them in the water, you know. The best thing to do is, you know, stop over at City Hall here by the police department and just drop those off, because we don't want kids getting their hands on expired drugs or drugs that you don't need anymore, so the best thing is to take them back. And, I don't know, Captain Steiner, if you want to add?
Well, I'll just add that although there's an event this weekend, we take drugs back at the police department all the time. So we do have a drop box there for the rest of the year or two, but this is a good opportunity to, to get a lot done at one time, so we'll be anxious for a good turnout.
Well, and they don't have to get out of the car on Saturday, do they? It seems to me that, don't you have somebody that actually goes out to the cars?
Yeah, they'll be out working outside for that.
Yeah, well, so, it's a big deal.
It does save you a trip inside.
All right, excellent, any other visits to come before counsel this evening?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Was that Carlson or Armstrong?
Carlson.
Motion by Carlson, second by
Novak.
Novak, thank you, I'm going to try and keep up. All in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.